Good evening. I would like to call our Griffin Spalding County Board of Education meeting for December 3rd to order. And if you would, place all of your electronic devices on silent, or turn them off if you would like. And Ms. Barbara Jo is going to do our prayer, and then we're going to introduce a special student to you, Elen Pilcher, she's a second grader at Crescent, but you'll get to meet her in just one second. Barbara Jo.
Father, we're thankful for this day that you have given us, and for the privilege of coming to the meeting tonight, and for serving the students of the Griffin Spalding County School System. Of all the blessings that we're thankful for, Lord, one of the most important is the blessing of educating our children to be protective citizens. So we ask that you go with us through the meeting tonight. Let the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable unto you, oh Lord, our strength and our Redeemer. In the Master's name and for His sake we pray. Amen.
And this is Elen Pilcher, second grader at Crescent. If you will come here, come right over here, and you're gonna, the pledge is there, I'll hold that for you.
A proud allegiance to the flag, a vinhous state of America, and to the Republic for a virgin stance, law nation, under God, indivisible, with worthy and justice frog. Please stand and sit in for the moment's silence.
Yeah! Thank you very much, Elen, for that. Even though it is my last meeting, I don't want it to get over too quickly. Just teasing, just teasing. Thank you. Alright, we will then move on to item number three, which is our school spotlight. Mr. Brown?
Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, let's give it up for Crescent Elementary. You can do better than that. Give it up for Crescent Elementary. We're excited that our school spotlight goes to Crescent Elementary. How many scholars attend your school? We currently have 444 scholars at Crescent Elementary. What is your school mascot? The Crescent Cougars. How many faculty and staff members work at your school? We currently have 61 staff members that comprise the awesome Crescent staff. A quote from the principal and why you love being the proud principal of the school, "It is a blessing and an honor to serve as the principal of Crescent Elementary. The faculty and staff at Crescent continue to do an amazing job of meeting the academic and social emotional needs of our scholars. I continue to be humbled by the love, care, and level of instruction that our scholars receive on a daily basis. We have the best students at Crescent. They are hardworking, kind, and compassionate. Saying that, 'I am a proud principal' would be an understatement. It is a privilege to lead the staff and scholars at Crescent. What good things are going on at the school socially and educationally. Our school theme this year is "Learning is an Adventure." Our main school focus this year is ensuring that students are receiving high-quality instruction in every class, every day. Our teachers meet weekly in professional learning communities where they plan for instruction, look at student data, and plan for the specific learning needs of their scholars. We made gains this year with our CCRPI in the areas of content mastery, closing gaps, and readiness. Let's give it up for Crescent. Here's another round of applause. Our scholars exceeded the state on the Georgia milestones for the percentage of students scoring proficient and distinguished in the areas of math and E and A in grades four and five, and also in fifth grade science. Let's give it up. Grades three through five all exceeded the state in the percentage of students or above grade level for Lexiles. Our scholars are working hard with the Accelerated Reader Program, and we are set for a school goal of our students to read 10,000 books this year. Our students have already read over 4,000 books, and we have led the district every month in the Accelerated Reader System Challenge. We have also been recognized as the iReady School of the Week multiple times this year. This year, we implemented the gifted cluster classes and have at least one gifted cluster homeroom in each of the grades first through fifth. Let's give it up for that innovative practice. Our staff and scholars continue to work hard every day to ensure that students are able to read, write, speak, and solve. We are excited to be a leader in me school this year. We have completed one staff training and will participate in another training in January. We recently held our lighthouse team session and developed an action plan for second semester where classrooms will begin building their mission statements. Student leadership roles will be identified, and will also be transforming our school building with student data, inspirational quotes, and information about the seven habits. We are excited to add more aspects of the Leader in Me program into our daily school routine to build leadership and perseverance in our scholars. Also, began a mentoring program this year, and currently have five male scholars in grades four and five working with a mentor. Crescent is extremely lucky to have a very active and supportive PTO. They celebrate our staff birthdays each month, provide goodies for our staff throughout the year, support our art program, and fund the program used in the computer lab for specials. They provide fun activities and rewards for our scholars throughout the year. They are a vital part of the success of our school. At Crescent, we put a focus on ensuring that we are meeting the needs of all of our scholars. We spend time during data sessions digging into our data to identify student needs based upon our subgroups and making an action plan to move these students. Our teachers are intentional with building positive relationships with all of our students and parents, and working diligently to remove any barriers that may be impacting their learning. We are very lucky at Crescent to have three inclusion classrooms that are made up of both general education students and exceptional education students. We have seen so much success for our exceptional students in building their academic, adaptive, and social emotional skills by being educated alongside the general education peers. Our general education scholars have also gained so much from their exceptional peers, and that there is a real feeling of family, community, and compassion in those classrooms. As a school, we have celebrated Red Ribbon Week, Bullying Prevention Month, and World Kindness Day. Our counselor does an amazing job identifying the specific social emotional needs of our scholars. She provides weekly classroom guidance lessons during specials, meets with small groups, specific student needs, and also works collaboratively with our staff to develop strategies to assist our scholars. Our scholars also receive lessons that are taught and reinforced to promote social, emotional, and academic success through accepting differences in others. Thank you so much for recognizing Crescent as the spotlight school for the December Board of Education meeting. As the principal of Crescent, I continue to be in awe of the hard work and dedication from my staff, students, and parents. We are committed to working together to ensure every, every scholar is prepared to graduate college and career-ready. Go Cougars. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, let's give it up for Crescent Elementary School as our December Spotlight. If we have any parents, any faculty staff members, if you scholars would go over to the step and repeat, and Crescent is in District Two, so Mr. Doss will present our spotlight certificate during the photo. Parents, join us.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Item number four is our board norms and protocols. It's more of a reminder to us, board members, that we have adopted those. They are available online if the general public would like to look at those. There are 10 words that we have kind of adopted, and the word for December is consistency. So we just, as a great reminder. Item number five is our school system announcements. Mr. Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I begin, I want to offer those Baptist folks, y'all want to sit in the front, y'all can come on up and sit. I know Coach Moore got some bad knees, and Coach Fed, he look like he hanging on too, so. Y'all come on up, sit down if y'all want to. Alright, okay. It gives me great pleasure to introduce one of our scholars to do our announcement. I met her before and found out something that was just near and dear to my heart, but I want to tell you a little bit about Hannah Carlisle. And I found out that she is the granddaughter of one of my, back then, we called it B-team coaches. Some of you from Griffin may remember him, but Sonny Carlisle is her grandfather. And Hannah is a 12th grader at Griffin High School. Her activities are that she's a part of the superintendent's Student Advisory Council, GHS Cross-Country Team, GHS Track Team, Work Base and Learning Student for the Griffin Spalding County Human Resources Department, President of Skills USA, National Technical Honor Society, and FBLA. She's an officer in the Key Club and a member of the Beta Club and National Honor Society. Her major, when she go to college, is that she wants to study aeronautical engineering. She hopes to pursue a career with NASA or SpaceX. Her first choice of colleges, she is awaiting a congressional appointment to the United States Air Force Academy. And this is so important. Yeah, go ahead, please. Please. Hannah is just so impressive. She has been offered a $72,000 scholarship to Mississippi State University. Other colleges in interest, check this out. Georgia Tech, University of Georgia, Kennesaw State, Georgia Southern, and Purdue University. She has been accepted to three of these institutions so far. Hannah is a University of Georgia Vince Dooley Award recipient for excellence in the classroom and in athletics. I want to add this, they didn't have it on the paper, but Hannah has a 108 GPA in honors chemistry. She also, her lowest grade average in high school has been a 95. So it gives me great pleasure to introduce to some and present to others one of our shining stars in our school system, Ms. Hannah Carlisle.
Members of the board and Superintendent Simmons, my name is Hannah Carlisle. I am a senior at Griffin High School, and I would like to thank the Board of Education for involving scholars of the district in the policy and legislative process. The announcements for the December 3rd, 2024 Board of Education meetings are as follows. December 11th through the 13th, 2024, is the Georgia School Board Association, Georgia School Superintendent's Association Annual Conference at the Renaissance Atlanta Waverly Hotel in Convention Center. The GSCS Board of Education will hold a called board meeting December 19th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. here in the boardroom at 216 South Sixth Street, Griffin, Georgia. Griffin, Georgia will, GSCS will be closed December 23rd, 2024 through January 2nd, 2025, in observance of Christmas break. Tuesday, January 14th, 2025, there will be a Board of Education Boardwork Session here at 216 South Sixth Street, Griffin, Georgia, 30224 at 4:00 p.m. Governance Team Cabinet Members and Stakeholders. This concludes the Board of Education's announcements for December 3rd, 2024.
Thank you so much, Hannah. Mr. Chair, that concludes the announcements.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, could I say something?
Yes.
Hunter, you're a breath of fresh air, and I might let you know, and some, a lot of people in this room, there is currently a Griffin High School student at the University of U.S. Air Force Academy. I remember her graduation year, as I recall. So congratulations to you, and I hope it works out for you, and thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely. Board members, it's now time for the adoption of our agenda. What is the pleasure of this board?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Holmes, a second by Ms. Cook. All in favor signify by raising your hand. Be 5-0. Alright, we'll then move on to item seven, which is recognitions. Ms. McDonnell?
Thank you, Mr. Doss. Good evening, everyone. We'll begin with the 80th Annual Georgia Youth Assembly. Mr. Pew?
Alright. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board. November 3rd through 5th, nine Spalding High School students participated in the 80th Annual Georgia Youth Assembly, a three-day mock legislature in which students travel to the state Capitol to learn the ins and outs of legislative process and what it's like to be a lawmaker. Approximately 1,000 bills were submitted from Georgia high school students, and the top 100 were taken to the floor of the House or Senate for full debate and vote. Spalding High School students submitted three bills, and all three were selected to the top 100 to go to the floor of the state Capitol. We can clap for that, that's pretty cool. The students that attended Youth Assembly have shared their experience in the video that you are about to see. After the video, I'll call out the names of all involved in Youth Assembly. Those that are in attendance will come down the line and shake each board member's hand, make their way over to the photo backdrop, and wait there to take a group photo with the board. Now, if we can direct our attention to the video to hear about the experiences of these students.
So the nine of us, we were given a scholarship. It's called the Be the People Scholarship. It's a grant that's given to schools to have more youth engagement in law and social studies, because there's so little youth that actually care about law and social studies. And we went on a trip to Youth Assembly, and we're also going on a trip to Savannah, St. Simon's, Philadelphia, Washington, and New York City.
So there were two teachers at our school that chose multiple students to write different essays about why they felt like they should go on the trip, and then out of those, they together just chose whoever they thought had the best essays and sent us eight on the trip. We just went, so there's two different trips. We just finished this last week, and we went to Atlanta, and we went to the Capitol for two days, and we stayed in a hotel, and then we just presented bills, watched other people present bills, and gave our opinions on the bills.
I feel like the Youth Assembly gave me, it gave me a lot of insight into the legislative process, and it really made me want to get like a lot more involved in everything. Like if I heard bills that I didn't agree with, or that I thought they needed some change, it just, it taught me a lot about the process of how you go about making those changes.
Okay, so like throughout the day, we were in, put in committees, and they were either Ogarthorpe or Carterhouse. And so in the committees, it's a smaller group of people, and they presented their bill, like the billmakers, they spoke to the committees, and then we had to vote on them. And then in the committees, the ones that were passed, they went to the chambers, and that was with everybody. That included all the other committees, I think? Yeah. And then in, in the committees, or in the chamber, it was more fast-paced. So like, there was the Speaker of the House, and they had to move the process along at the end, but.
So I wrote a bill about allowing 16 and 17-year-olds to vote in state and local elections if they can pass a civic exam. My bill was selected, there were, I think, over 1,000 bills submitted, and just over 100 were selected to be debated at Youth Assembly. So my bill was debated in the House, it passed through committees, and then it went to chambers and passed in chambers, and then after that, it switches and goes to the Senate. And so it passed in committees in the Senate, but not in chambers.
So my bill bans no-knock warrants. I submitted mine before the event started, and it got selected. I think there were about 1,000 bills, and it got selected, and then we go on to committees. And we present our bill in front of a small committee that's like a, it's a smaller version of what happens in chambers. And if your bill passes through committees, it goes to chambers, and that's, it's like the real deal. It's a larger scale. And if it passes through that, then it will swap over to the Senate. I was in the House, so it swapped to the Senate's committees and the Senate's chambers, and it passed through there. And after it passed through there, the governor got it, and mine eventually got up, being vetoed. But yeah, I was just really happy that it got up there, and that it was, it was big enough to get some type of impact from the governor. So I think that was really cool.
The purpose of my bill was to raise Georgia's tipped minimum wage from $2.15 to the federal minimum wage of $7.25 to give better financial security to service workers across Georgia, and to create a more competitive economy against other states as well. So my bill passed all the way through and was signed into law by the youth governor. I'm very proud of myself. I've never expected to do something so large, and although I'm not like creating a real bill, it does give me this feeling of satisfaction, like I can go and do such larger things than this, and this feels like a truth, does bigger things.
The opportunity of this Youth Assembly trip has really helped me, because in the future, I've been planning on being a lawyer and going to law school, and if colleges see that I took this opportunity to go and like do these trips to further like engage myself in this subject, I feel like it'll really help me get into the places that I want to go.
After attending the Georgia Youth Assembly, we all decided that we wanted to start a club called the Georgia Civic Engagement Club, which further discusses on government and what we would all represent in there, and all discuss about.
I used to want to pursue a career in nuclear pharmacy in order to make a difference for cancer research, but since Youth Assembly, I've changed my mind. And now I want to pursue a career in politics, so I can change our nation for the better.
Pretty impressive. There's a lot of knowledge shared in that video. It's obvious that that experience was, was quite impactful. This time, I'm going to call out the names of the students and the leaders involved in this program. As I call your name, please come up, shake each board member's hand, and gather at the photo spot, the step and repeat there. The students are Anna Foster, Colton Stutes, and you can go ahead and make your way up as I'm calling. Rondell White, Walker Blaylock, Sam Godat, Rhoda Osevahy, Michael Oliver, Kayden Skelton, and Mary Frances Noble. They were nominated and accompanied by teachers Teresa Flake and Victoria Bryant, Principal Dexter Sands, and Assistant Principals from Spalding High, Angela Hagens especially, were involved and supported this program. So I'd like to call all the leaders from Spalding High forward at this time that are present. And also Dr. Jamaica Fields supported this project as well.
Just to give a shout out to all of the amazing social studies teachers in Griffin Spalding. Yeah, that's right, give it up for social studies, alright? And to just see, because I have like such a major love for politics, I have such a major love for anything that deals with the Senate. So if it's the Georgia Senate, if it's the United States Senate, if it's the Florida Senate, I have an affinity for the Senate. And I visit most of, all of our capitals and taking pictures inside the Senate. So it is, it is great to see the love and passion for public policy, because that's where it truly starts to make those changes in the things that we do every day. When I was teaching, I would always tell my scholars that if you can tell me one thing that doesn't deal with a policy, you can walk out right now and make an A. No one was ever able to do it, because all of those things are regulated by policies that we have. And so I just want to give a shout out to everyone who participated in that initiative, because it is truly something because it is truly something that helps to move our county, our state, and our nation forward. And so having civically engaged scholars is something that I'm all about. Just want to give a kudos and shout out to y'all. Thank y'all so much.
Alright, our next recognition is our district holiday card competition. Each year, Griffin Spalding County Schools hosts a holiday card competition with cash prizes and the winner is proudly featured on the district's Christmas card, spreading holiday cheer throughout our community and beyond. We extend gratitude to the sponsor of this competition, First National Bank, who awarded prize money of $200 to the winning student. Congratulations to that winning student, Ms. Vivica Montano from Kennedy Road Middle School. She was selected as the 2024 Holiday Card Competition winner. Thank you to Ms... Yeah, this is her tree, beautiful. Also want to extend gratitude to her art teacher, Ms. Alyssa Miles from Kennedy Road, for her dedication to fostering creativity and inspiring students to reach their artistic potential. At this time, Ms. Montano, if you'd like to come forward, we'll let you shake hands with the board and make your way over and take a photo of you. And then we have one more to recognize next, still as a part of this, this card competition. Congratulations, $200.
Congratulations to you.
If y'all hang tight for one second, we've got one more person to join you. We'd also like to recognize the most creative or the superintendent's choice award winner. This recognition and $50 were awarded to Veda Baleza from Rehoboth Road Middle School. Her humorous card features a bat saying "Happy Halloween" and a snowman saying "Wrong holiday, buddy." Thanks to all of our students who shared their artwork and especially to our two winners. If you guys would join her, we'll take a photo.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Next, we have the GSPRA Awards for GSCS Communications Department. Dr. Warren?
Good evening, Board Members and Dr. Simmons. Each year, the Georgia School Public Relations Association acknowledges school public relations professionals that have demonstrated exceptional communication skills by producing outstanding publications, photography, and electronic media. Publications are judged on design, skill, and meeting the overall PR goals and objectives. We're very proud to announce that our communications department received three Gold Awards of Excellence and two Bronze Awards of Excellence. The communications department received Gold Awards of Excellence for the following: the quarterly e-newsletter entitled "The GSCS Community Communicator," our 2324 GSCS Real Men Read Event, and the 2425 GSCS District Calendar. We received Bronze Awards of Excellence for the GSCS One Day in the District and our social media campaign, which featured "Lovers in the Air" that was dedicated to our staff couples. Our winning five statewide awards is a great accomplishment for our communications department. They're doing a great job of developing our distinctive brand and telling our story. And I'm very pleased the GSPRA saw the value of their work. I'm very proud to recognize Executive Director of Communications and Partnerships, Mr. Adam Our Digital Communication Specialist, Mrs. Laura Bieber. And also our videographer, Mr. Brian Miller, for his efforts and collaboration.
Next, we have the Georgia DOE PBIS Distinguished Schools.
Good evening, Chairman Doss, Board Members, and Superintendent Simmons. Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports is a multi-tiered, evidence-based framework, data-driven, proven to reduce disciplinary incidents, increase a school's sense of safety, and support improved academic outcomes. More than 1,400 Georgia schools in 27,000 nationwide have been trained in PBIS. Implementation of positive behavior support save instructional hours otherwise lost to discipline. The premise of positive behavior support is that continual teaching and acknowledgement or feedback of positive student behavior will reduce unnecessary discipline and promote a climate of greater productivity, safety, and learning. PBIS schools apply a multi-tiered approach to prevention using disciplinary data and principles of behavior analysis to develop school-wide, targeted, and individualized interventions and supports to improve the school climate for all students. I am excited to present this school's being recognized for their PBIS efforts. Each year, the Georgia Department of Education recognizes schools for their quality and fidelity to PBIS implementation. Schools are eligible to receive awards at the emerging, operational, and distinguished levels of distinction. Tonight, we will recognize four schools for receiving distinguished level recognition. These schools met the criteria for all six outcome measures for PBIS for the 2023-24 end-of-year data and evidence, which include the percentage of students at Tier 1, stable or declining office discipline referrals, in-school suspensions, and out-of-school suspensions. Our first school that would be recognized is Ann Street Elementary. Ors Elementary. Griffin High School.
Thank you to all and congratulations. That concludes my report. Mr. Doss?
Alright, thank you, Ms. McDonald. Ms. Ray, did we have anyone signed up for public comments? Alright. With that being said, we're going to take just about a three-minute break, so Board Members, a three-minute break so that we can still have a few things to do. But if you, you're welcome to stay, but if you need to move on to the next thing for the evening, you are welcome to do that too. We'll take a three-minute recess.
Mr. Sands?
Alright, we will resume. We are now at item number 10, which is our Consent Agenda Items. What is the pleasure of this board?
Self-move.
I have a motion by Ms. Cook, second by Ms. McDonald. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. B5O. Alright, we will move then on to our action items, which is cellphone use recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, good evening to those of you in the audience and those of you online. Board Members, as you, as you recall, over the last month, month and a half, we've had lots of discussion around the use of cellphones in schools during the school day. At the November meeting, we had a discussion around the outcomes of both the town hall as well as the thought exchange that was launched to garner feedback input relative to cellphone use. I'll remind you that participants included members of our student body, members of our faculty and staff, as well as parents and stakeholders in the community at large. It is the district's intent tonight to garner the board's commitment to, I'm going to say, support this effort through the adoption of a policy, recognizing that the board's work relative to what happens in the district is through policy. And so what you have before you tonight, albeit the first draft, I'm asking that you consider policy JCDAF, which entails student use of cellphones and personal electronic devices during the school day. I recognize that this is the first draft. I want you to understand that this is not the final draft, but this is my way of receiving both your support and policy to move the district forward relative to establishing a resolution and then studying how we may implement such an effort in the '25-'26 school year. So I said, all of that... So I said all of that to say simply, board members. It is recommended that tonight you adopt the first reading of policy JCDAF, Use of Electronic Devices and Cellphones During School Hours, relative to implementation for the '25-'26 school year. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Board members, questions?
I do have a question. What is the normal, what is the normal, because this was drafted, this was given to us when?
This was given to you, I believe, on the 22nd, maybe, of November?
Of November? Okay. All right. And in that, I guess the next question I would have is, what is the price of, it says line 42 on the regulation? Is the student responsible for a lost pouch or district-approved fee will be charged to replace the pouch? Any damages to the locking pouch will be charged to the student's school fees. What is that price?
So, right now, provided that we used the pouch, that was just an example of what a regulation could look like. That unit, per unit price is $30. If we decided to go with the pouches that the board received information and a visual presentation on, then we would, we would expect families and students to replace what the district paid for said pouch. The first one would be free of cost to the student. Any subsequent need for a pouch, we would expect families to replace that, much like we would a textbook or Chromebook or anything to that effect.
Okay. And why is it listed on the agenda as a rec, it says cellphone use recommendation versus the actual policy?
So what we're wanting to do is determine and garner the board's support. As I shared with you in November, in the absence of policy, we can talk about what we'd like to do and we can talk about all of those things, but where you demonstrate the governance is through policy. In the absence of policy, there is no regulation. And so while that regulation is provided to be a guidance or a sample, what I'm really focused on this evening is a policy. Again, and I'll reiterate, I understand that typically we would have come with and worked with you on said policy prior to. That was the effort and the intent in November. But if we are expected to learn our way through a successful implementation in the '25-'26 school year, I believe the staff deserves and needs the next five months of this school year to figure out how to do that. But I'm not going to drive them in that direction without your support. And the way that you support it is through a policy.
Right. And that is true. You can support it through policy. But I think the first step what we should do is to, which shows the board's supporting and the superintendent to be able to move forward, would be a resolution. I think the appropriate thing to do in this matter, because we have not developed the policy yet, is to support a resolution that gives the superintendent clear guidelines for developing the policy. So it just seems like, and it would have been nice to have further consultation with the entire board who develops policy. And so I think that I support it, but I just think the way that it's being done, it should be a resolution first that shows support for something and then the policy developed. So I definitely think that it should be a, it should definitely be a resolution that states the board's support, whereas, whereas, therefore be it resolved, superintendent will draft a policy, blah, 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 blah. That's how you garner that support. I am not in a position right now to vote on this particular action item. I think that we need to follow the form of what it should be, and that should be a resolution that will show the support that the board has in directing the superintendent not to have a policy at this point, but a resolution that supports that.
Okay. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Brown, I just want to ask, why would you like for us to follow that process when that's not the norm for what we do?
All right. So maybe you can educate me. You've been on the board longer than I have. What is the norm of what you do?
When we introduce a new policy, we never had a resolution before implementing a policy. We just, we've had discussions, we confer with the staff, and we did our due diligence by contacting our constituents and putting it out there. And once, you know, that's done, we just draft, do a draft of the policy, which has been done. That has, that's been the norm for new policies that I've experienced.
Okay. But even with that, because it's being a pilot program, right? We're going to pilot it first before we do it, right? Or is it just in 2025-'26 school year, it automatically happens?
Go ahead.
So the intent, as I shared with the board in November, the intent would be to implement fully this effort in 2020-'25-'26. What I will offer is that, like I've shared with our administrative staff, oftentimes the reason that initiatives and such fail is because of the way that they're rolled out. I don't believe that it would be wise, or I don't believe that we should expect success to put this type of effort in pre-planning. I think we need to learn our way into how to successfully understand what are the nuances that we haven't considered. But before I commit the staff's time, before we get into all of that, I wanted to see where you were and the way that you demonstrate that is through policy. So that's the essence, is trying to ensure first and foremost, before we take on four to five months of learning, that you are firm via policy and there is consensus with this understanding so that whatever comes with it, this governance team is prepared to lead through that rather than...
So the first read was on the 22nd, then?
Nope, nope.
So how, how do we get up, has it been out there for 30 days yet, has it?
No.
So how is it that we are voting on a, we have taken an action item on a policy? On a, even on a recommendation?
We have received a recommendation to move forward with this, and he is wanting us to vote to make sure that we are all on the same page that we're trying to, or that there's a consensus that wants to move forward with this, before he puts the energy into place.
To put it on first read.
To put it on first read. Okay. All right. Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. McDonald?
I agree with what Mr. Holmes said. I'm sitting here thinking, I don't think I've ever voted on a resolution that leads to a new policy. I don't. So I totally agree and support what Mr. Holmes said. But Dr. Warren, I believe I asked you last time when you presented about local systems in the state that are using the Ponder pouch. Have you had any, and you may have, I may have asked you this last time, but I don't recall. Have you had any conversations with school systems or certain schools that have, or have you had the opportunity to, that are using this pouch and the, and the good that it provides, that it's supposed to provide?
Yes, ma'am. Because of the holidays and whatnot, I had opportunities to, one of the directors, the heads of the initiative in the Cap County Schools. They're politicating, I think, about 10 middle schools and about 10 to 15 high schools, the Yonner pouches. And they tweet their board policy, number one. Number two, they put a team together, they visited schools and did a tally to see how many notifications students received. And the students were glad to take part in that. And they received anywhere from 25 to 50 notifications within a 30-minute window that could cause a big distraction to instruction and teaching and learning. From there, they saw the need to get the pouches. This was back in the spring. They purchased the pouches, and the kids kept them in the pouch throughout the school day. They ran into a couple of issues. One student tried to take a magnet. It was recovered, and a student was disciplined. And one student tried to purchase another device to open the pouch, and that was addressed, and the student was disciplined as well. But for the most part, it's been a positive implementation and result that the students are happy considering the circumstances. But teachers and administrators definitely feel it's gone over very, very positively in the Cap County.
Okay. And as a student leaves the building, there would be...
There are magnets around campus and in classrooms where they can unlock the pouch.
Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that email went to the entire board of other counties who uses the pouches. But because of the short timeframe, I was only able to speak to the Cap County.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other additional questions or comments? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion from the recommendation.
Motion.
I have a motion by Ms. McDonald, a second by Mr. Holmes. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I'm still just confused why it's being done like this. I just, since when, I mean, I just, this is, is this the first time you've offered a recommendation for us to vote on? And as superintendent, that you brought to the board in this manner? I was talking to the superintendent.
So actually, if you'll recall, the last slide that I presented to the board in November, I gave the board my recommendation. It did not lend itself to the board taking any action. The problem that that creates, again, you're moving a district and its staff in a direction that this board may not have the appetite to work on. If it does, then you have to do something. And policy is what you do. That shows to the staff that they have your support. They know that they have my support, but your support is through policy. But tonight is not the first time that you've heard this recommendation.
No, it's not the recommendation. I'm just asking the way that it was done.
So tonight is the way, this is the first time that it's been done in this way? And truthfully, sir, I don't know any other way to have done it, which is why I tried to explain. If you have desires to change said policy now, once that you, once you've adopted through action that this is where your stance is, then we go through our normal protocols. But my intent was to glean your appetite, because this is second order change. It has never been done here. It is not always successful. My staff will tell you that if we're going to do something, we're going to do it right. This is going to take us time to learn how to do it right. I do not intend asking principals and teachers how to figure this out in July and then teach children. So we need time to go through that. Now would be the time for you to allow us that time to go through that if you wanted a successful...
And because it's never been done before, I think what, internally, what this needs to happen, there needs to be a process developed in doing that. And this is something that we could probably deal with in 2025. And I'm willing to discuss it then, or we can continue to discuss it now. It's not that I'm not in favor and supportive. I support it. I was, you know, definitely supported. And so I just want to, just questioning the way that I, seven years I've been here...
This is how we did the whistleblower.
This is how we did the whistleblower policy? I think it was a little different because I...
And that is the only new one that I know of that we have...
So the other policy, so for example, the wellness, the first policy that I ever amended was the EEE wellness policy. It wasn't done that way. When we did the whistleblower policy, Mr. Shepherd and I worked along each side of each other to get that done. And it was on first read. It never went as a recommendation. It was voted on as a recommendation. So what I'm just saying is that this process is different for this board. The process of it being on this agenda as a recommendation and we're actually voting on it is a little different. And so I just want to understand, maybe we can find what the process is, or maybe we can define what that process, but this has never happened in my seven years of being on the board. And I have, this is not the only policy that we've developed. I can name at least three or four policies that I have authored in my time on this board. So just this process was just a little weird, and I'm, you know, calling it out for what it is. And either we can discuss how we're going to do it moving forward, or we're going to do it with this board, or we want to do it with the board in 2025. But the way that this just happened should not happen that way. Voting on a recommendation. He gave us the recommendation and told us, and after saying, "Hey, host this town hall meeting. Open up the thought exchange." So we were all on the path of to create the policy and directing the superintendent to do it. And I think it's great, but I'm just questioning the way that it has been done.
Okay. I think that would be a good topic for a workshop, to be able to walk through that process and get that done. At the moment, we do have a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we call for the vote?
No discussion from me.
Okay. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Be five oh. All right. We are then moving on to item 12, which is Presentations and Discussions. We have policy BCBI for first read.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Simmons. I'm presenting to you this evening a revised policy BCBI, which relates to public participation in board meetings. We're recommending a revision of the policy and regulation for BCBI due to a recent court ruling from a case down in Florida that was appealed to the 11th Circuit Court of Appeals. The 11th Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that some of the language in our policy and other policies similar to this were sort of subjective. They want the wording to be objective. They want us to remove as much as possible words like abusive or obscene or unreasonable because what's unreasonable to one person may not be unreasonable to another one. So after consulting with Dr. Simmons, our board attorney, Mr. Cullum, as well as the personnel at GSBA with their team of attorneys, we have decided to revise our policy BCBI and regulation to adopt the model policy and regulation as suggested by the Georgia School Board Association. Do you have any questions?
Board members, you've heard the presentation, you've seen and read the changes. Are there any questions? Yep.
Yes. I've reached out to everyone prior to the break. And at this time, the policy will sit in assembly for 30 days for public input, your input. And I'll come back after 30 days for a second reading, asking for your approval and final adoption.
All right. Thank you. We'll move then on to policy GAG, Staff Conflict of Interest, for first read.
Good evening, Board Chairman, Board Members and Superintendent Simmons. I present to you for first read, policy GAG, Staff Conflict of Interest for first read. This is part of our collaboration with reviewing and updating policies. At this time, there are no recommended changes to this policy. A regulation has been written to support this policy.
All right. Board members, any questions or comments before this is put on first read? All right. Wonderful. We'll move then on to policy GAHB, Staff Political Activities.
Yes. I also present to you policy GAHB for first read. It's the timing of this policy. We, it's up for review. We've gone through our recent political cycle. There are no changes in this policy, and we also have a regulation that supports this policy.
Any questions, board members? Comments? All right. We will move then on to policy GA, excuse me, GBBA.
And so I also present to you, Mr. Chairman, and board members and superintendent, policy GBBA, Professional Personnel Qualifications and Duties for First Read. There are no recommended recommendations. Major, there's just one change to this policy. We changed our website at the very bottom. When we moved to the GCSE.org, we found it necessary to update that policy to reflect that. And we also have a regulation that supports this policy.
Any questions about this policy, board members, or thoughts? All right. So that will be placed on first read. Thank you very much. Next up, we have our Career Technical Instructor for Griffin and Spalding High School, Dr. Shepherd.
Good evening, Board Chair and Board Members and Superintendent Simmons. I've also got Mr. Kelly with me as well. So this is a collaborative effort, proposal for our CTAE and also our exceptional students departments. And so this is a career technical instruction program. And just to give you a little bit of information, of course, our non-negotiables, we wanted to be accountable to this position, as well as we're focusing on addressing the diverse needs of our students. And the summary for this is just, we would like to create a Career Technical Instruction Coordinator Position. coordinator position, CTI position, for Griffin and Spalding High Schools. This is a teacher position that's recognized by the state, and it would be supervised by the district and housed at the school level. The gradual addition of staff over a three-year period of time to target support for our students with disabilities in CTAE pathways, which we currently do not have. The state requires that this program is created prior to the implementation of this position. So that's the purpose of this. And just to give you a little bit of background, the current challenges we have, especially in our CTAE pathway classes, like construction, culinary, engineering, are heavy labs especially, that have a lot of heavy equipment. The students with special needs, a lot of times require additional accommodations that they don't always have a lot of access to. They still do get their accommodations taken care of, but we just would like to provide that additional accommodation with an additional teacher in the classroom with them. So this would give them that access. And so to give you some idea of the benefits of this, one of the things for students is it improves the academic and career outcomes for students with special needs by having that teacher in the classroom to provide them some support on entry-level skills, self-advocacy, transition to employment. It also provides the teachers with additional resources for accommodations and individualized support. And then based on our communication with other school districts that offer this position currently, they've noticed higher success rates in their CTAE programs, as well as enhanced reputation for inclusivity and post-secondary preparation. The role of the CTI coordinator is someone who would ensure that the students, and this is like I said, it's a teacher's position, so it ensures the students in the CTAE classes receive those necessary accommodations. They bridge that gap between education and industry, ensuring equitable access and career readiness for all students. Just to give you a little bit of background information as well on our current numbers, in Griffin High School, we have 215 students with disabilities, and in Spalding, we have 153. And we also have the BRIDGE program. And if you're not familiar with the BRIDGE program, we did give a little bit of information on that, and that is our students with moderate to significant academic skill differences between grade level and instructional level. This is a 1:1:8 ratio, so teacher, peer professional to eight students. And we currently have this in place, like we said, at Spalding High School. So we just want to provide for those students as well. We did do a little bit of research for some of our district comparatives, and we looked at Tiff County and Glen County schools. So they are comparative to us. Tiff has one high school, and Glen has two, and they both have one CTI instructor. It's based on the needs of their students. And the CTI coordinator training, so this position requires a considerable amount of training through the state. They actually require that once this teacher is identified, of course, they're a special education teacher, hopefully with a CTAE background or some experience, and this person would be one that would have to go through training during the summer. It used to be five days during the summer, and now they've spread it across the school year. So they'll take three days in the summer, one day in the fall, and one in the spring. And this helps that person make sure that they know what to do to support the students, but also to make sure when it comes to FTE funding, that we're doing the correct paperwork and everything for that as well. Because after about 18 months, this person is eligible, it's available, to receive FTE funding for this position through the state. So that's a great opportunity for us. So looking at that, we have a multi-year implementation plan. And for the first year, we're recommending having one CTI coordinator. It would be approximately $110,000 through IDA funds. The general offset for FTE, of course, would not be anything for that first year. We would have to go through the training and initial program development. It would also require amending IEPs, and a lot of them still need to be amended at this point, so we're right on target. Year two, we would look at adding an additional CTI instructor, or coordinator, I'm sorry, with $110,000 for IDA funds. But the initial first CTI coordinator, that amount would be offset by those FTE funds. And then for the third year, based on the need, if we needed to, we could add some additional peer pro positions for the needs of the students. And that would be around $70,000 for IDA funds. And of course, the offset at that point in time, overall, for both of the two CTI coordinator positions, would be about $220,000. And then overall, for three years, the cost for the IDA funds would be about $290,000 possibly. So that would be kind of what we're looking at. But in closing, like we said, this is a proposal, it's a collaboration between CTAE and exceptional students, and we're requesting that you consider this for the funding that we would require for the initial IDA funds. And we will take any questions at this time.
Ms. McDonald?
Thank you for this report. I just have a question about, it said, two peer professionals, both Griffin and Spalding. Would that be two for Griffin and two for Spalding, total of four?
That's a great question, thank you. That would be one for Griffin, one for Spalding. And really, it would be based on the needs of the students and the number of students that we would require support. It may be that based on the number of students, we may not require any peer professionals at that time. But we could add them if we needed to.
Yeah, that seems awfully, one person for 215 students and then 153, one peer pro for that many?
So the person would be going into the classrooms, they would have to work with all the CTAE pathways, and they would go into those classrooms and support the teacher. So it may be days that they don't, there's no required support, and then they would go to another classroom. But they would schedule that in advance with those teachers. So for students that needed pullout for reading, for assessments, things like that, that would allow them to have that kind of support. So some of the classes, at certain times, don't require it.
Okay. So I think what I hear you saying is it's doable, one per school, based on, because I know that 215 students won't need-
Considerably, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, board members? I have a question. You gave an example of Tiff County and Glen County. How many counties are doing this? Any idea? Or just, I mean, are we talking half? I mean, is there-
Yeah, Henry Clayton Fayette.
Yeah, our neighboring counties, Henry Clayton and Fayette, all have CTI positions. Clayton has one for every high school. I have experience working with these positions. You had a question about the 200 students and if one person could serve that. The caseload's usually around 30 to 50 students, so it's not all students with disabilities, it's just students that require that, a little bit of additional support in those type of classrooms.
Thank you.
Also, just thinking about that too, I'm so sorry. For those students, they may not, not all of the 215 may not all be in CTAE classes. So that may be the other thing.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, we are moving then on to our October 2024 Monthly Financial.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're in December. We're going to do some catching up on our financial reports in January, so we're actually presenting you October tonight, because we only had one meeting for the past two months. So this will be as of October 31st. We're approximately $30.3 million in fund balance in the general fund. We started out about $45 million, but we, you know, with the tax collections, which I mentioned, and more about that in just a second, that's come down, which is normal. Nutrition is, I've got about $3.3 in fund balance at the end of October. For your general operating statement, for your general fund, about $6.4 million for the month of October, on $9.5 million in expense. So deficit right now, about $15 million. I did talk to Ms. Hollums, and I want to repeat appreciation for her. She is bringing us tax money every week to us. And not many school districts in the state, you get the money that quick. So she actually came to my office Monday, and I think the tax bills are due December 30th, so we should start to see all that money start coming in pretty soon. So that will self-correct some of these balances. Page number three, we're still waiting for some grants to be approved at the state. That's why there's very little revenue at the top, except for maybe the pre-K column, and the expenses still at the bottom. Page four, our nutrition financial statement, about $2.7 million in revenue so far, with approximately $2.6 million in expense. So we're still to the good, about $60,000. Page five, we're handling about almost $104 million in investments. I do want to point out the rate column, it started to now go below 5%. So we had been at 5% and plus for the past year. So our state investment pool at the state accounts is almost 4.9%. It also has our bond money in there as well. And then this, SPOS 7, is actually for the month of September. You can see it's down to $1.1 million, and I just, I believe the gas tax has still been suspended by the governor. So that is about the time of that, when some of that was taken to effect. So we hope that still continues to be over a million. I don't think we've dropped below a million in a very long time. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
All right, board members, any questions about the finances? All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. We're at Governance Team Comments. Start down here at my left with Mr. Holmes. Okay, Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Doss. I just wanted to take this time to recognize you and Ms. Cook for your years of service to this board. I think it's 23 and eight, total of 31 years, sitting in front of you tonight. It's been an honor and a privilege to work with both of you. And when people ask me about this particular kind of work, to me, it's an honor to always be able to give back to your community. And you both have done an excellent job in regard to that, and I'm sure you'll continue to do that. I have appreciated your friendship. I will continue to appreciate your friendships. And then it's always an honor to work with people that always do what's best for teachers, parents, kids, and employees. And everyone in this room has heard me say that for years. So I just wanted to say thank you. May the good Lord keep you well, and I hope that you'll come back to visit. And I'm sure that we'll have some lunches together down the road. I just wanted to say thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. Just want to say happy holidays to everybody. I was sharing with Mrs. Cook that it's been a pleasure to be her seatmate. Definitely have enjoyed working with you and, you know, having conversations with you. I was sharing with her that growing up, there were two people in particular that I thought were just like the coolest people ever. That was Walter Cook and Raymond Head Jr. And growing up, when I was in school, my mother would tell me, you know, they would take away the city council meetings as punishment for me. So if I was bad in school, I couldn't go to a city council meeting. And so on the days that I knew that I could be good on Mondays and Tuesdays, I could act up the rest of the week. But I just want to say, thank you, Mrs. Cook, for your many years of service, being the longest-serving member on this board, as I've referred to you, being the gentle lady of the fourth, I've referred to you as the Southern belle from Tiff College, and just so many other things that I appreciate about you and what you've done. And so thank you, thank you, thank you. To Mr. Doss, it has been, it's been real. We have had our ups and downs, but what I can say is that you do care about this district. You do care that you want us to be a good school district. We may just have different ways of thinking how we're going to get there, but at the end of the day, thank you for your many years of service. You have brought something special to the board. And as we continue to move forward, I know that your role as a pastor and your role with the Ministry Association, that you're not going anywhere, that you'll still be around with Archway and other things. And so just thank you so much for that, and looking forward to see what life has for you guys after your public service. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then also just want to say happy holidays to everybody. We will not gather again, we have a special call meeting on the 19th, but just want to say hello to everybody, enjoy time with your families. And I know that for many of us who have lost loved ones, this is a very, very difficult time. And so continue to just love on your family and pray for those who have lost people during the holiday season. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Cook? It's probably two.
William Shakespeare said, "All the world's a stage, and the men and women merely players." They have their entrances and their exits. And one man in his time plays many parts. I thank you for the privilege to play a part on the Griffin-Spalding County School System Board. It has been my distinct pleasure to serve you. I have worked with some outstanding superintendents, administrators, faculty, staff. I'm a strong believer in public education, and I will continue to be a believer in public education. It is a great levelizer in our society, and we have to continue to be champions for public education. I hope I have served you well. I've tried to serve you with the utmost professionalism. I think we've done a lot of great things as a board, and I look forward to hearing future accomplishments of this Board of Education. God bless each of you, and as Bob Hope used to say, thanks for the memories.
So, Mr. Chair, Ms. Cook, on behalf of the administration, faculty, and staff, and the students of the school district, thank you for your years of service. Thank you for your leadership. Most importantly, thank you for your belief, as you've already stated, Mrs. Cook, in public education today, now, more than ever. It is important that we believe, not only support, but believe in public education. And the two of you exemplify what can happen when individuals believe in public education. And so again, on behalf of the students and the staff and the administration, thank you for what you have done. We salute you, we thank you, and I hope that in years to come, as great things continue to happen in the school district, you'll be able to say that you were a part of the building blocks, or that you were a part of the discussions, or that you were a part of the decisions. And so I appreciate your willingness to allow me to serve in this capacity. I appreciate your support when I served in a different capacity, Mrs. Cook. And I wish you nothing but peace and prosperity moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. To my board members, I would like to say thank you for your friendship, for your willingness to work together, to talk through the difficult subjects and times. I feel as though I am a better, more rounded person, and better at my leadership positions, not only in my day work at the church, but also in other civic organizations. So for that, I'm grateful and thankful. To all of you out here that are employees, thank you for your hard work. I realize that you don't necessarily understand or know some of the things and why some of the things are discussed and talked about, and why we do what we do. But it is, I can tell you, for everyone here, it is because they do want the very best for Griffin-Spalding. I believe that 100% with all of my heart. And so I haven't had opportunity to speak with all of the new incoming board members, or both of the incoming board members. I have spoken with one, and I believe that to be the same there also. So you will be in good hands, and Dr. Simmons continued to lead and guide, and I think we are moving in a great direction. So thank you for the opportunity to serve. Ms. Cook? I want to give you a hug. All right, we do have item for executive session to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending litigation. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. I have a motion by Ms. McDonald, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right, it is five oh. Thank you for being here this evening, and we will be headed to executive session.